So, welcome to the August twenty first meeting of the Wayne Planning Board. First can have all the members present, present say their names, starting with you, Jeanie.
Jeanie Bernafo.
Richard McHale.
Hey, Bergman.
Doug Ferris.
Andrew Boral. Um, so we have a quorum tonight, uh, Richard, would you be willing to serve as a full member tonight?
Yes, okay.
In Mitch's absence, thank you. Alright. And Richard sent out minutes from last month's meeting. Their discussion.
April's meeting.
April's meeting. Yeah, right. Uh, any discussion around those?
Did everybody read them?
Sure, of course. Do I have a motion to approve? April's minutes.
Take a motion that we have filled April's minutes.
My second.
All in favor? Bye. Not opposed. Minutes are approved. On the agenda for tonight. We have one main item of business, it is. An application by Mr. Michael Lee for a subdivision. And. I guess first order of business, does anybody have any reason for which they need to recuse themselves from consideration of this application? Alright. Well, here an introduction from Chip and then a presentation by Mr. Lee.
Alright, this is this board's. As we sit here now, first subdivision hearing. Um, it's a bit different than the other hearings, I try to. Send you a lot of material, I hope you all read it. Um, this will be done in three stages or more. First stage is like the ones we always do with a public meeting, just where in right now. Once, and what we're looking for at this meeting is for completion. There's anything sorely missing. You will extend the meeting to another time to have Mr. Lee come back and bring it. Otherwise, if you find the uh, application complete. You'd vote on it, it would be uh, accepted as a complete application. The next step is I'd be sending out a butter notice to both people. Um, and you would also tonight schedule a site visit to go see the property itself. Which I suggest we do before the meeting. Uh, the next meeting, so you might want to do it at six or something, meet up at his property. You'd show them around and then you'd come back here for the public hearing. Um, public hearing, again tonight, you're just looking for completion, you're not looking for accuracy, you're making sure that everything's been answered. And if there's anything else you'd like him to bring, so you could don't say, you know, I'd like to see more of this, more of that and do that. But we're not looking for uber details here. Um, public hearing. All's fair, you know, what we want to do is we want to see, you know, what's on it. That needs to be known, I believe there's a list of things, um. I think the clearest list is on that general code version of the uh. The uh subdivision, I'd suggest bringing that and you'd go through that list. Um, you'd be answering the questions, anything they don't find. Um, once you get through that, there'd be discussion, public comment, don't are public. And um, then if you know, everything seemed right. You could vote it in favor, but that's not it, wait, there's more. With the subdivision. After the public hearing, there will be questions, there will be a lot of comments and things. And then Mr. Lee will be asked to bring back in the next meeting. The final uh, plans for the subdivision. And you go over that, review anything that was in question before. And then give a vote on the final call on the subdivision, yes, Mr.
Um, Chip, I just want to ask, you say there's gonna be, how do you know there's gonna be questions, are you sure there's gonna be questions? There generally are.
Always could be question, right?
By the public, after the public hearing, you're saying?
It's, yeah, I mean, there could be.
Typically, but not always, alright, gotcha.
Um, you see the attendance tonight, so that's probably.
Yeah, I didn't think there was a lot.
But anyways, be thorough in making sure that everything's in there that needs to be in there. Again, you have that list I gave you.
Mm-hmm.
From the uh, general code. Um, and then that's it, one, two, three. If there's anything, you know, outstanding or blaring, you know, problem, it could be more, hopefully not, done a good job with the submission. That's why I brought it to you, and so we'll go from there. Take over.
Mr. Lee, would you like to uh, present your project?
Um, well. Not very good at presenting, but as you have in front of you, I'm looking uh, approximately nineteen acres uh, of land there.
Anybody needs the map, there's a couple of copies right there.
Yeah.
Looking to. Create four, single family. House lots. Uh, the. Land surveyor has marked everything out with buffers. Uh, as you have uh, mentioned already, there's a, the report in there, natural resource report, uh, done by Flycatcher LLC, who I was recommended to, to seek out for assistance on this. They've done a thorough survey of the property, again, you've got all the details that I was given. Um. And based on what, on their findings. And the requirements that were found, you know, for the town of Wayne. Uh, the land survey put everything that, uh, we believe, everything that was required on there for, for visual uh. Um. To, to designate, you know, to show the buffers, to show. The, like, the Flycatcher LLC said there was a small stream, it's noted, it's, it's hard to see, because it's about, you know. An inch and a half long down on the southern tip of the, of the property. Um, but again, to the best of my knowledge, everything has been included. Uh, by the land surveyor on that uh, that large printout for, for visuals. Um, so based on the recommendations of. You know, uh, Davis Land Surveying, who's, who's been helping me out with this Flycatcher LLC. Um. You know, I. I've got attorneys that'll do all the deed work, stuff like that, but uh, at this point, everything that. I think uh, to start the project, I think everything, that's my knowledge, you have it all there, everything I was asked to submit. I believe I've met that, um, and. That if there's something else you're gonna ask me, and I'll, I'll make sure you get what you need.
Thank you very much. Um. Alright, so again, this meeting, we are not actually considering questions of whether. We think that the uh, subdivision is allowed or. Um, anything around that. We're just talking about whether we have all the materials required. Um, hopefully it's listed. Here, this has changed a little bit since the last time we looked at it with the general codes. Um. So it'll be our first time going through with the slightly new. Format, but hopefully this is clearer and easier than it used to be. Shall we, shall we go through point by point, or does anybody else have any questions regarding completeness before?
I'd like to ask Mr. Lee one question, make sure, is this your first attempt at subdivision, Mr. Lee?
It is, it is, yeah, yeah, it's my first attempt at doing this, um.
Hmm.
Um. Little background of me, I'm a, I'm an ex-banker, um, started buying apartment buildings years ago. Um, I've been managing uh, my own apartment buildings uh, for about my first building. Twenty-five years ago, maybe. So, me and the bank had that relationship, you know, they, um, but uh. I've been a realist licensed real estate agent for the last eighteen years, um, and I was also working as a property manager for a uh. For a large management company in Augusta, managed about three hundred units. Uh, also for, that was like nineteen years. Um, but. I've built a couple houses, uh, myself and a partner built one uh, last year here in Wayne. Um, that partner, we've actually bought the land together, so if you see something on the deed there, uh, we bought it together, um. And then after a couple of weeks, they decided that they were gonna be building a, a house, a new house for them. In Reedfield, so they backed out of the project, so I bought them out. Um, couple. Uh, less than a month after we bought it together. Um, so they built a couple houses, I built the house with them. Um, I built a couple of other houses, um, but definitely my first subdivision.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Just one question, um. Access would be directly from the roads via driveways, no internal roadways or anything like that?
Correct.
Yeah.
Alright, shall we go through?
Sure.
The checklist. So. First, preliminary plot plan of the tract to be subdivided certified by a licensed land surveyor. Tied to establish reference points of, at a scale of not less than one hundred feet per inch must be attached to this application. We have that. Um. And is that the same map? That we have digitally?
Um, the digital copy, that the one, I don't know where the digital copy came from.
Oh, no.
Um.
We just copied the map from there.
Okay, so I, I submitted three as the. Uh, the larger prints.
Please, okay.
Yes.
Okay, great, let me ask, take a closer and look at that, the digital versions. A little harder than they just.
Yeah, well, there's hard copy here too.
Okay, great, has anybody made another one please? Um. Number one, a soils evaluation done by a main licensed site evaluator must be made for each proposed lot and or dwelling units. Show location of test bits of plan and attached copies of soil reports for the proposed development. I saw that with everyone else. Okay. Um, if a shoreline common area is included, it is. Not, does everyone agree? Right. Potential wetland does not count as shoreline, it's. Right, would be resource protection instead. Show all areas designated as resource protection areas within and abiding the parcel to be subdivided along with the required buffer strips on the plan. Um, did you show that where they could find that on that?
I don't know.
Yeah. But I want to see it.
So we've got uh, broken down to the actual building envelopes. Um. So we've got the setback off the road. This one that kind of goes crazy here, this is the seventy-five foot buffer from the wetlands of the designation with the.
Yeah.
Yep, it's all the wetlands.
Cemetery over there.
This is the cemetery, um.
Outfit.
Yep, and the actual, the little stream is. This little squiggly line right there, that comes down and then goes on to the neighbor's property.
So everything with, this is all the wet.
This is all wetlands, is it?
Flycatcher.
Yes, yes, and that's why these are the seventy-five foot buffers as put in by the land survey, so the building envelopes. Uh, you see, so even though this is four point three nine acres.
Building envelope is small.
The building envelope is at point six oh of an acre. And this is the only one that really didn't have much, but still it's a three acre lot, one point five nine is the building envelope. Point six four is the building envelope and point four seven is the length, so those are the only areas. That would be touched out of all of this, uh, basically this whole, you see this.
So setback from wetlands, which you talked, this is the envelope here.
Yes, yes, sir. Yep.
And you just said that was a seventy-five or a hundred foot buffer strip?
Seventy-five foot.
From wetland.
Yes. From the wetland.
And the streams.
And the stream.
I thought I read on the.
Well, that's, that's, that's a great part.
It is seventy-five. I mean, that's a question for later, but.
So, so they, they occasionally, they've designated here, they, they've written the seventy-five in there, so that. Kind of keep track, and it gets a little.
And the soil tests are, are they showing on this map?
Uh, the, the test ports are, um, I don't know how to describe those little. Those little marks there, but uh, get reports in there and the. Uh, so this one actually says right here, test port, test port.
Okay, so they're all in this.
They're all included.
Building's area.
Just to clarify, I think you just said this, but just to clarify, the building envelope is not like the space that you intend to build, it's just the space that's. Buildable outside of the buffers.
That's the usable space that we're gonna build within.
Gotcha. Okay, great. That seems to be. Point three, covered?
Well, I don't know if this is relevant for that point, but. Um. Since it, on the zoning map, it's like. In the three zones, not just in. R three is that? Are we gonna talk about that at a separate time?
Yes, that's, that's what I have down as well, yeah. Um. Show all areas to be reserved as agricultural land or open space, believe none, I mean.
Wetlands, yeah, right, right.
But, um. Date of plan. North arrow. Those lot lines, yes, acreage, location of subsurface sewage disposal systems, soil test bits and wells existing and or proposed, no existing. Um. Do we need locations of subsu- subsurface sewage disposal systems at the point of subdivision, or at the point of?
He's done test bits on all these properties.
The, the soil test, right, the soil test bits are all done and designated on there, and again, you have the report.
That's a test pits, no plans, so.
Right.
Of course, haven't got to build anything.
Proposed lot lines, location of sub-service sewage disposal systems, I mean, that sounds like it's asking for where septic would be put. But there's no, we're not actually building right now, so.
Well, he's building one right now.
We're, yeah, we're building one right now, as for the landlord's land use laws, I mean, it's, it's one, yeah, it's just one lot, so. Um, there is, there was, yeah, the separate plans, we've already had the, the application, we've already. Wow.
It is.
Overall properties.
It is part of the overall property, yes.
Do you have, so. For completion sake, could you bring those to the next one, the plans for your current one? For the building you're actually building?
The plans for the septic plan?
Uh, yeah, like the location of the septic on the, that you're actually building.
Yeah, okay.
If you absolutely.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
No.
Um. And any proposed wells associated with that as well? If you're gonna be drilling a well.
So, um, on, on the one parcel that I'm building on, obviously I would have that.
Right.
But for the rest.
You're not.
Right, the rest is.
Or.
Is blending.
No, yeah.
Okay.
I think it only sort of applies since. That construction's. Sort of going through a different process, but as Chip pointed out, it is part of the same subdivision, so I guess for completeness. Does everyone feel good about that approach?
Mm-hmm.
So, point seven, done. Eight, location of all parcels to be dedicated to common or public use. Do not believe that applies here. Location and size of existing watercourses and other essential existing physical features. Yes.
We got it.
Hmm. Location and extent of shoreline zone does not apply here. Um. Hundred foot setback from normal high watermark, seventy-five from streams, twenty-five from intermittent streams. Location and size of any existing water mains, culverts and drains, as it's undeveloped, I'm assuming there are none. Uh, locations, names and limits of right of way of existing and proposed streets and roads, location of any easements existing and proposed. No easements. Location and perimeter boundary of any area where the water table is at or within six inches of the surface at any time. I assume this area is all within the wetland.
Right.
Okay. Um.
I, I did see in the, in the soil report that there was some. Um. Permeation up to, I think it was fifteen inches, but nothing within the six inches, so.
There was some intermittent ones, and yeah, and those test bits were only conducted outside of the wetland area?
The, the test bits, they did two on each lot, um. It's for dailying.
Outside of the wetland area, though.
Uh, I'd have to look. They're all listed on there, there's.
Okay. Other plans and maps required, um. Supplementary map with the butters. Tax map number and lot number of said parcels, abiding rules public or private. An access for subdivision, man's annoying, that was a butters, I saw that, right? Copy the United States geographical survey, seven point five minute series, with the area to be subdivided outline, which has contour lines indicated. Um. We just saw that as well.
Packet.
Yep. We may require the contour lines to be overlaid in the preliminary plan, I don't feel the need to do so, it seems messy. Um, alright, no street construction is involved. There are no restrictive covenants. Is that correct?
Right.
There is no reserved open space or agricultural land. No, are they not owner? I don't think number two applies, does anyone disagree?
Include them being limited, proposed deed language, it's gonna be nothing. You've already, you said acquired the whole property by deed from your former partner.
Yes, and it's, and it's listed on that big, the big plan, it's already, uh.
Listed the book and page.
Book and page, everything.
One's listed in the applications, that's the one you both acquired it, or just you acquired?
The one that's listed, the one when I acquired it.
Okay. That's what we needed.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And there are no common areas or anything like that, it's just.
It, yeah, it, it's nineteen acres and just looking to do driveways off the existing road.
I drive by there.
So, I mean, it, it's just. Would it?
Yeah, pretty flatland.
Okay, so. I. Seems to me that the application is complete, again, that doesn't mean we can't request more information, but. In terms of the requirements of an application, seems to me to be complete, everybody.
Is a, is a site in sparrow. Does it require before you can consider it complete?
What you, what you.
Or can you make it a condition of it?
Right, it's a condition, we have, we have to.
It's a conditional permit.
We have to schedule it, even if we don't find it complete, because it is contingent upon receipt. Thirty days starts from receipt of the application. Not for when.
Completed application.
When he gives us a application, application, not when we find it complete. Uh, so, even if we found it incomplete, we would still, still have to schedule. Our site visit today.
You have to schedule that within thirty or thirty-five days, I can.
Yes, okay.
So the application is considered complete, because you gotta make a determination within.
It, by the time we have, we hold our next. By the time we hold the public hearing on it, yes, it's being considered complete, that's open, yes, we have to have the site visit completed by that point. So it is contingent upon. Yeah. Upon that.
Okay.
Well, so my one question is still before it's complete about number eleven, like, whether it's, whether we should.
By, by understanding. Feel for the country, is that something that we want in order to evaluate the? Um, the completeness of it?
Yeah, I guess just I'm questioning whether eleven should just, it's a minor thing, but if it should just say like R three, R two and R five.
Under what?
Other zones in which it's located.
Which point?
Just like the first initial application, point eleven information.
Something you could request to him, uh, to bring to the next meeting, I thought I'd seen that in here, but.
Well, I mean, it's just really. So procedural, it's just, when you look at the tax. Map, it's. Not just an R. I think it's an R two, R three and R. I mean, but.
Two and R three.
I believe it's R two and uh, resource protection.
Yeah, so if we can just.
It's right there, like the last page of the packet, you have your packet.
Okay. I believe this is the. So this is R two, this is R three, this is R four, that's correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I got the thirty of it.
I, yeah, I would like to request one overlay of that, but that's part of, for me, evaluating.
Yeah.
Gotcha. The suitability.
As long as. It's just nothing from point eleven.
Michael, if you came by the office, have to print out a color copy, but you have that last page, you could answer that question.
Okay. I think you actually. Forget that. I didn't say it was that, but. It was the wetlands, overlay to the. Um, thank you, though, at some point. Um. And that's, I mean, that is also a good one, it says R three. Here, um, according to this. According to the map, the end of the packet. Uh, and. My meaning of this is actually located in. R two. R five. And some R three?
That's my impression.
Does this, does that seem? Correct to everybody else?
I mean, I, it's hard to read those.
It is, I mean, I'm looking at this, lot eleven one. And, okay, when you course. You, uh.
Maybe, you know, get, just the larger color coded, so.
This one, so.
Yeah.
This is going to R two. Or three, or five, yeah. Um.
R five's resource objection.
Yes, and it specifies that we. Just different guy.
Where on this map does that look like?
That's. That's something that I would like. Just that I would like to see for natural consideration.
For the overlay, to make sure we're not in a area.
To see exactly where we're R two, where we're R five, where we're R three, to determine the minimum lot sizes.
Not to make it difficult for.
It's something I would like to see, and I'm just gonna bring that up, but it's, I don't think it's. It is not in our, on our, it is not required for complete application. This is required for complete application. Although the way that is simply something we would request.
Alright.
Is that, is everybody feeling good about that?
Yep.
Okay. Um. But we should. Note on this, uh. On the approval that. Point eleven should be amended from R three to R two, R three and R five. Because they do have different minimum lot sizes, and that will likely.
Yeah, yeah.
Be important. Maybe. Um. Alright. So. Do we have any further discussion on the completeness of the application? Now, do I have a motion to find the application complete?
I'll make a motion to find the application complete.
By the self-pleads. Or is there further discussion?
I, I think we ought to make it conditional, it's complete, but is it complete? Until we. Now, we don't have to have the overlay to make it complete, do we, for the application?
No, the, the overlays for considerations of.
Just a consideration of whether it means. In the various.
Yeah, it's not required. Okay. Uh, all in favor? Okay.
Now, you schedule a.
Yes. Um. So, site visit, do we want to follow our previous, um. What we've done previously, schedule on it prior to the planning board meeting in itself, is that most convenient for people, is that convenient with the applicant?
So I think we should do that to expedite.
Yeah, it's not far, should we schedule it? Means five thirty, six might be tight, what, scheduled for five thirty?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, for me, does that work for you?
Is, we're talking about immediately prior to the meeting?
Yes.
So is.
The eighteenth.
One hour, I mean, well, it's only what, ten, five minutes away from here.
I guess that's my thought.
Is an hour gonna be sufficient?
Typically, our site, uh, our site visits have not taken. Have not taken that long in the past, and this one.
Yeah, this one is, is flat land, I think, and it's.
Features.
It's only nineteen acres, and some of it's cleared, you can walk.
No existing.
Yeah, and, and the area we're gonna be looking at a lot would. Buildable areas, closer to the road. So I think you're. I think it's doable. We walk fast.
It, I mean. It's not, you know, we're not expected to confirm. Like, the uh, surveyor's work or anything like that, it's just to get an idea of the ground, so. And.
So.
Yes. So does that feel good to everybody, five thirty, day before the meeting?
Day before, day of the.
Sorry, day.
Day of the meeting, what date is that?
Eighteen.
Eighteenth of September.
Um, I suggest everybody convene at your lot, which is under construction already, because that'd be a good point.
Which one is under construction?
What's doing on there, there's lot number four.
Which is.
It's, it's right closest to you, right here.
That one there.
The the smallest one.
Need a lot for.
Yeah, depending on what, there's a driveway. Happens, yeah, there's a, yeah, it's two, it's listed as two eighty-six Leeds Road.
Um, that's on the one.
It's uh uh two nineteen.
Two nineteen.
I actually do have to check. We just need a quorum at the site visit. Oh, we don't need to, alright.
Anybody cannot make the site visit with the group. Um, sure, it's okay with Mr. Lee, if you go by and see it for yourself. But we do appreciate having everybody there. But there's no need of a call.
Alright, I think I will be back, I'm flying back from Pittsburgh that day.
Public's not invited.
But.
Yes, they are.
Oh, yes.
Yes, they are.
Um, okay. And I will.
Eighteen.
Seven.
But now for sixteen.
Yes, us. Um. Fish on the nineteen.
Okay.
Alright, so. We've scheduled that, I don't think we have any uh. Well, we have mentioned. And so let's make a note, do we have, we don't have anybody taking minutes, do we?
I took a little bit of.
You took.
Of like the high point.
Thank you, would you mind making a note in the minutes that we um both that. Point eleven was changed from our three to our two, our three and our five. Um, and. Also, it sounds like we have agreed that. If they have been disabled, we would love to see an overlay of the towns zones with the Ashville proposed. Proposed development, um, so that we can determine what minimum lot size applies. Um, so. Thank you, and I assume you know where to find the minimum for your own calculations, you know where the minimum lot sizes are in our ordinance per zone.
The land surveyors, they use it, that's why I rely on them.
Okay, great. Um, if you have any questions, Chip is your response.
Meeting and then uh discussions. Yeah.
Alright, do we have any further discussion, or do I have a motion to? Close this uh, close this portion, the public meeting. On this application and to move to uh discussion of board business.
Which is I moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Congratulations. And you'll see you next uh, next meeting. I'll see you before then.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Ah, alright.
Just real quick for the.
Yeah.
Me, for the minutes.
Yeah.
Um, so the meeting after. The site visit will be the public here.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, butters will be noticed, there'll be a notice in the uh, in the back journal.
Alright.
Actually, two of them. Which I'll have to get done right away.
Um, right. I'm just trying to see if I'm gonna be here for this. Open will be here for this. Okay, yeah. So we have two pieces of uh, for business, Chip's gonna talk about general code.
Chip, you you already gave the comment for the construction episode, right?
For that one piece, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Um, so, we're nearing the finish line with general code, I'd sent it out to you over a month ago. Uh, the last thing I sent you, as I outlined, there were two pieces. One was the actual um, what it's gonna look like online, it's actually the final product unless we change anything. But at this point, it's probably, I'm hoping there's not much to be changed. Um, the other piece that I uh alluded to was there's. A package in there that just shows the individual changes that occurred in all of the work. So if you go through that, you can see exactly what's been changed, and then you can refer back to the overall uh product. We are just interested in the land use subdivision. Think there's one other, we're just, that's what I need you guys to check over, look at, okay? Um, once you do that, um, Henry's looking at the things he was dealing with, which was. Things that are not under our purview, um, it would go back to general code, they'd clean up anything necessary, and then. That document would become um, our next land use ordinance after a public hearing. I'd imagine with both the select board and the planning board. And then that would have to be voted on at a town meeting, which I'm hoping we can get done at the next November election, which is coming up. So I'd ask of you all just to look it over, if any questions, give me a call, this is not a markup thing, this is nothing, this is just something shout out. If you find something, okay? Um.
You wanna, you want us to notify you typo errors too?
Well, if you see typo errors.
You really need to.
Well, I mean, you might want, I don't.
I saw.
See, our our ordinance as it stands right now.
List already.
I do too.
Has been pretty, it's pretty, I mean, it's it's a robust ordinance somewhat for Wayne, but it's pretty sloppy, it was kind of slapped together. Back when the shoreline uh regulations came in, and they just took the shoreline regulations and pinned stuff on it.
Mm-hmm.
We further did stuff when the ADU thing came up. And we did a big project to get that in there, and then we, of course, we had the Jellystone, which resulted in the uh RV. Uh, mobile thing. So what they're doing is they're taking all that, hopefully they've cleaned it up, I was impressed when they take the use of it. In doing the subdivision thing, but I need you just to read through it, so you know what's there, anything blaring comes out, let me know. Um, then at the uh, the joint meeting, that would be a public hearing, the, you know, the public would be invited to take a look at it. And comment on it, and again, from there, um, it would go to a um, town meeting. Questions, comments?
They didn't look for the the planning board ordinance itself, did they?
No, that was not on the docket, I mean, we had, you know, I, for those that weren't here back then. Um, there, the ADU thing came through and the state was handing out money to get the ADU thing and everybody's. Uh, you know, ordinances and things. Um, I kind of thought that was a good opportunity for us to do the bulk of the work, I worked hard on it. And we took that money and we hired general code to take everything and clean it up. So I think, you know, we did a good job on each of the different pieces that we've incorporated. What they're doing, they're polishing it, they're gonna make a beautiful online version, PDF, anybody wants it. Um, and it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be changeable as we go along, but the other thing they did is they had their staff, which is huge. Go through all the new main regulations and things that weren't joined or that changed, that's in there too. You'll see a lot of that in that one document, I told you that there's. All the changes are in there, so people can, you know, see what's going on, they're gonna look at that and go, well, what's changed, that's what that other document's about.
But not the planning board ordinance or any of the other.
Well, not, okay, we're not talking about land use ordinance, we're talking about there's an ordinance for like the select board, the planning board.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, all that kind of thing, they didn't do that. They did the parks, they did, I mean, they did the uh, what was the, not the entertainment, what do we call it?
Amusement.
Use amusement, they did that. But Henry decided to take that, and God bless him. There's, you know, road ordinance, so.
Mm-hmm, good.
Anyways, just I'd ask you to concentrate on what's, you know, germane to us. Um, get back to me and uh, like to get it done by uh, hopefully the next couple of weeks if we could.
Hmm.
Okay. Hmm, thank you very much for your help.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Um. I have a thing, does anyone else have anything?
I just wanted further, if I could. Tell me about who's, who's on the board members now, have we got that, is that cleared?
Oh, whoa, good move. Because tonight we're are supposed to and will elect a chairman and a vice chairman.
I thought that that was.
So.
Taking care.
And well, now, what what uh, what happened was the select board had not. Um. My membership expired, we know, the select one had not. Reconfirmed it or reappointed, um, I went to the select board meeting, they did reappoint me, they also. It is unclear now if the promotion of an alternate member to a full member actually falls within the select board uh jurisdiction, but it falls within there. It's unclear now, but it falls within their proposed. Uh. Their proposed changes, um, so I went ahead and asked for select board blessing to promote Genie to a full member. So, um, whether or not it was needed, but.
Thank you, Genie, can we vote on it to make?
No, what you're voting on tonight are officers, that's all.
Right, which we have to do annually.
Right.
According to the.
We all, we all understand that, but we didn't have a meeting, you know, the last meeting, so. So it's the first meeting after the town meeting, so this is it, so I'd suggest that Andrew, you recuse yourself. Vice chairman take over and you run the election for the chairman, and then the chairman will take over to do the vice chair.
Okay, so remember the last election we had was.
No, just.
This should be an, I I mean, somebody, I would hope that, I'll just make a comment, I would hope that.
I want to use this.
That do it is because they want to if they're. Volunteering, I presume that's what it was last time. So are there any nominations for chairman of the planning board for the next?
I nominate, I nominate Andy.
Second.
Okay, do we have to vote on a nomination? No.
No.
Any other nominations?
Well, we have to vote on.
We have to vote on that first and second. Well, unless there's additional nominations, there's many discussion.
Close another. Co-chair.
It does not wish to be, so. I uh, let's vote on it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Tag you it.
Now, we have nomination for.
No.
Coach, he takes that over, yeah. Anybody like to be uh?
Yeah, do we have any nominations for vice chair, current vice chair being Mr. Ed Bergman?
Nominated Ed Bergman.
I second.
I withdraw my nomination.
Oh.
I would like to nominate Richard, well, he can't, he's still, he's still an alternate.
Still helping.
I would like to nominate Genie.
I think you should nominate Mitchell, he ain't here.
Hey, that's an idea.
Do it.
No second, okay.
I, I mean, I'll second, no, Genie does not want to be.
One try.
Sorry, I'm just spread too thin right now, I can't do any, I can't do one more thing for one more, that, one more person, I just can't. I got my mom, I got the Legion, I got too much stuff, I can't do it.
So, we're without a vice chair, I nominate you, no. That's good, he'll have to show up then.
You could nominate him, elect him, and then if he turns it down, then you could. Do something else.
Really don't want?
I I don't, I don't like. I mean. Ah, it's for a year, right?
Yeah, and you're good at it.
I'll. I'll take it for one year.
Okay, so you guys.
Yep.
Alright. So Alex, we got a first and a second, you wanna vote?
You guys just switched right first, I think.
Yeah, so uh, any further discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of appointing Ed the reluctant vice chair?
Quick vote before he changes mind again.
All those opposed.
You're a good man, Ed.
Did you not vote, yes, I have to.
I can't.
Oh, very good.
Um.
He's refused.
Yeah, refused. Um. So, yes, and I, and so just to update people, that is. Again, it's unclear what current jurisdiction is, but moving forward, at least that is the select board's proposal. That pre- previously, we simply assumed that alternates would become full members. Personally, I think this is a sensible way to operate.
Um, that is the way they're doing it.
Uh, but the select board, the proposal that the select board is discussing is to.
For the future.
For the future. Um, is to requi- it's for to require select board confirmation, and a promotion of an alternate member to a full. So.
Well.
Maintain authority with the select board is what they want.
Yeah.
Rather than automatic.
It's beyond that, though, it's beyond that, is when your term is done. Okay, what they're proposing is, is that they start from the beginning, you don't automatically get. You know, re-upped.
And well, these are both of the, they're proposing.
Their proposals.
This is, those are two separate.
Um, and I I'd suggest you talk to your select board to tell them how you feel about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that would be it, so, then next year, you up Doug next year? How how long's it hit, three years, four years?
Five.
Five.
It's five, uh, yeah, I I got back in twenty, I came here twenty-one, yeah. So at that point, next year, you'd have to say to the select, well, I'm interested in staying, and then they would decide what to. So this is a volunteer board that we do. Out of the goodness, because we love our town, and we have.
Money.
We have to seek permission from the select board to continue to serve. Anyone see?
New term.
Anyone see a perception advantage?
Same way.
Besides me?
To be, well.
Blackboard when you started?
No, Ford Stevenson and Fred uh, DePlessis came to me and said, hey, we've been on this for twenty something years, we want you to take it now.
But I, I have a plan, just.
To be clear, the, this is actually, so there's, there's two different things here, the authority to promote alternate to full members. Uh-huh. Is not currently defined anywhere, this is a new select board proposal. The select board currently already has authority, and it is in our planning board ordinance that the select board reappoints.
It's been there.
And it says they may reappoint, so the select board already has, that's not actually new, they're proposing process, which. We can, you know, we may have input in, I I may have input in, um.
Sure, but what what essentially what it boils down to, you could get voted off the island.
Yes.
Need to do that anytime.
Thank, I think if you, I think there's.
Well, I think you can be removed for cause, but that's quite different than not being re.
But you're already.
You're on our team too.
You could already be none, uh, you could already be not reappointed. Uh-huh. The only real difference is that now the select board is in their ordinance is actively. Encouraging evaluation of whether to reappoint because. They have cited reasons such as balancing skill sets on the board, et cetera, et cetera.
Catched.
There is, you know, there, there, there is.
There's some rational reasoning behind.
There may be, there's a difference.
Well, there's not a proposal, you tell me, because I don't, I heard some discussion about it, but isn't there a proposal to offer it to existing members unless they're. To existing chairs or whatever, or no?
I haven't heard that it's. The idea is you, they they have said that previous service. Should and will be.
Is a factor.
Taken into account. They seem to, they seem to want the freedom, does like, they cited some examples, whereas like, well, we really need an engineer on this board, like we should have the freedom to appoint engineer. You know, the reality is like. We typically, we often have open seats on boards and nobody wants to fill them.
True.
Um, so that, you know, much of this may be. It may be, you know, moot in reality.
There's a lot of conjecture, speculation, uncertainty here, I would suggest that we. Close the meeting and and go online, and if you want to continue discussing, you can.
Um, we could probably.
I think we could.
I just ask one question, which is, my my term is still a five-year term, right, and then maybe potentially I'm a full member, we're not sure, right, but then.
You are a full member now.
Okay.
And you're.
Five-year term.
So my, is my term, it's not continuing.
Yes.
A five-year term.
No.
A new five-year term.
You were continuing Tom's term that he that he that indicated.
I thought she was continuing her term.
As we go offline, this is getting.
Well, this is germane to her actual status, but we can check on that, my understanding was that you were continuing your term, but are now a full member.
Well.
Um.
Yeah, and actually, I said full five years, I think, I I do remember hearing that they were talking about appointing. To the remainder of Tom's.
Didn't know, they talked about that, that did not actually happen, I objected to that.
Ha.
Um, so, my, unless, that did not happen, my understanding is that Genie is continuing to serve the remainder of her term as a full member. Consistent with our previous.
Get it defined.
Um, I mean, at this point, I think that's.
That's enough.
Yeah, because again, no, none of their proposals have actually gone into. I have one more order of business, if um, this is more just sort of a head, like a heads up for what is coming, the um. And the soft proposal. The uh, this has come up, come to me via various channels, few times, the select board. Um. Wants to start thinking about the comprehensive plan, they have looked at our ordinance, the planning board ordinance. Doesn't exist as a um, power and privilege of the planning board. Um, notably, though it is a privilege to prepare or to circum- or to supervise the preparation of. A comprehensive plan. And um, so, we still have several years, as Richard has looked into and confirmed for us. Um. But I guess since the. Well, at the select board's behest, um, I will softly begin this process, I guess, by pitching. To all of you that um, we should discuss as a future meeting and to consider at least what uh. Sort of in my mind is, I will make the pitch that. A comprehensive plan is essentially an executive document that falls outside of the planning board's typical purview, and so I would. Encourage people to think about a um, to take the approach of supervising the preparation of, meaning to. Enlist members of a representative committee. Um, to revise the comprehensive plan, and to me, a key point would be. Um, to revise the comprehensive plan, and to me, a key point would be. We have a comprehensive plan, um, much effort went into it. The only things that need to change are things that reflect changes either in the town or its priorities, um. So I would encourage, given the committee, if we went down that road, a mandate which includes revising only what is needed. Um, rather than getting into a. New discussion of what the town ideals are, particularly as, as was mentioned in the select board meeting, and I think is an excellent point. It is very unclear that the comprehensive plan has really been put too much use at all. Um, the only citations of it that I'm aware of are extremely generalized and working in effect. And sometimes contrary to its initial intention, so. Not that it shouldn't be done, and this is sort of another point. Part of the, um, statute that says that we shall repair one refers to a state statute which has now been repealed. Um, which defines a compre- like, it says, the preparation of the concert comprehensive plan as defined by. Thirty MRSA section four nine sixty C, this has been repealed. That does not repeal our authority to do it, but it does potentially impact the necessity of one and the state's view on it, so.
My understanding is that it is still required, and certain state certification is still required, I, I, I went to the online, um. Like, like a class on the, the new legislation that's come out. There was, there was some discussion of comprehensive plans and certification, so. They were, they were still treating it as a, as a current requirement.
What I'd, um, what my plan is to do is to contact MMA, ask them. Because if you go to this statute, it simply says repealed, it does not say where we placed it. Or exactly what it said, so I would like to get answers to both of those from MMA. To have a clear understanding of what they expect from the comprehensive plan now. And also an idea of why, why they're repealed it. I'm, I'm going to email them.
Okay.
Everybody's okay with that approach. Um, but, yes, simply to say, I.
The person who was talking about the comprehensive plan in the online session was actually the head of the MMA.
Then, hopefully they'll be able to give me some good answers.
Yeah, you can get your help, okay, great, so you're gonna take care of that.
I'm, I'm gonna do that sort of as a first point.
And then we can discuss it.
We can, uh, yeah, make that, make an agenda perhaps to formally make that proposal, we can ask, I think what the, what this like what it said they want from us is if we want any resources, help, et cetera. They want to build a plan for that. My anticipation is that that would be more for the committee to determine if it needs, um. You know, again, with my hopes that the scope will be somewhat limited, given that we, we have one, the town has not changed hugely, and we.
But what I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you, you feel that the planning board should take a management. Position, not be interactive in the, whatever proposed changes that might be needed or not.
Yes, and any member of the board is welcome to challenge that idea, but I feel we should.
What does that mean, if I could, maybe I can tell you. What, uh, I'm sorry, Chip, what, what does that mean, Andy, are, are we gonna write the comprehensive plan or rewrite it for the, for the select board or for the town? Are we gonna do that?
My proposal is, no, a committee would do it.
A committee?
With, with probably a member of the planning board if someone was willing.
Okay, I, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
In Reedfield, what they did is they took one member, they asked for volunteers from each committee. Planning board, select board, conservation, um, whatever.
Budget.
Budget, all that, I mean, which points to why, it's which points to why you didn't wanna do it. No, 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 keep going, keep going, keep going. Which points to why Andy's makes a lot of sense, we have no mandate, understanding of whatever of things like the budget. What's going on with a hundred acre woods, what's going on with the roads and everything, so, doing it by a committee like that, appointing it. You'd have input from the entire staff in a previous life, got it. And then they can bring it all together, at the end, bring it back and. Animal control. Exactly. Road commissioner. Everything. Arborist. Hedge, snow shovel guy.
Three of those, I'll tell her.
Corraling cats.
Okay, for one, it's real, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I just, I'm a processor, I just need to know. The, the, okay, I, now I, now I can help actualize your vision, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay.
To be clear, this is not a formal proposal, perhaps we'll, I think I will try to make that next meeting, if anybody thinks about it, and they're like. Sure, no, we really need to do it ourselves.
This is while you're the chair, don't hear.
Yeah.
Uh, then with that, do I have any motion to close?
I make a motion that we close the meeting.
Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye. Get out of here, let Chip go home.
Not too bad.